I need to pledge.
That's a non-normative.
No, I don't need to pledge. I guess I'll need to pledge. The guy that's supposed to be the person. Don't worry, you're not going to get struck by lightning. I promise. I meant pledge. What is this?
We call this meeting to order for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. Will the clerk please call the board?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Riden.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
City manager Rick Holden.
Here.
City attorney Ashley Smith.
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We are going to start with the invocation. I do not see Stan Richardson here, so I'll go ahead and do that. And then the pledge led by Commissioner Burnett. If you'll all stand, please. Our Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for this time that we can come together and talk about the business of the city, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to do that. We thank you for everybody that's here tonight that has come out to participate in city business, Lord. Lord, I just, I pray over our citizens, Lord. I pray you would just be with each and every one of them, Lord, and our city, Lord. And I pray for our city staff and our administrators, Lord. I pray you would just be with each and every one of them, Lord. And as we talk about the business on this agenda tonight, Lord, I pray you would bless this time as well. Lead us, guide us, direct us, and protect us in all that we do and all that we say, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And motion passes seven zero. Item one, the Donate to Life proclamation. I'm going to go ahead and pull that. We do not have anybody here for that. So we're going to move on to item two. It's 100% Otero update on the PIT or Point in Time count. Peg Crim from 100% Otero is here with Jen Gruger from the hospital and Nadia Sykes from the Counseling Center. And you will have, you'll have 10 minutes. And I'm sure that they already told you that. And just if you'll state your name for the record.
Thank you. I am Jen Gruger, and I am here today with 100% Otero Housing Sector, as well as, I do work for Christus Southern New Mexico, previously General Champion, and I run the Community Health Worker Program there. I am going to spend three minutes or less on just a quick report on our housing symposium and community conversation that took place on March 21st. Our objectives were to bring the community together to have a conversation about topics related to housing, access to housing, and homelessness. We wanted to level set the issue and get community on the same page using agreed-upon vocabulary. That's really hard to do. We don't all understand what all of the words are that surround housing and what's available. We spent the first half of the day hearing from folks like Amy Whitfield. She's the Housing and Homelessness Advisor for the Office of the Governor. Donna Miestas de Vries, the Chief Housing Officer at the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority. Chris Herbert, Executive Director of the Eastern Regional Housing Authority. And we had a presentation of sort of a vision or possibilities that can happen around creating housing opportunities by redosso Mayor Lynn Crawford. And in the afternoon, we had a panel, including those folks and additional people. Mayor Payne opened the meeting, and we had really good attendance. I think we had about 90 people present in the room from throughout the community, including those who are in various municipal positions, and community members, builders, realtors, and people with lived experience. We had several folks who had housing challenges and were in a current homeless state. The big resounding message at the end of the event was, please keep meeting. Please keep having these conversations. After the meeting, we had some really good dialogue with the mayor. We're very excited that Stephanie Hernandez is going to come and give us more information about what the city is doing in these areas. Because it was, we were not able to get everything on the table at that one meeting. I think that was our big takeaway. So the big message was, please keep meeting. And what we would like to encourage as the next step is the Southern New Mexico East, I think I'm saying this right, Southern New Mexico, I'm going to get the title wrong, S-N-M-E-D-D, the Council of Governments, along with Purdue University, is having a two-day summit in Roswell. And those dates are May 22nd and 23rd. So on a little bigger scale, for the counties that include Lincoln, Chavez, Lee, Eddy, and Otero, looking at housing and what's available in that larger region on the first day. So again, a lot of information being pushed out, given to us about what's happening at the state level, at the federal level, and then breaking out into working groups on the second day. So Otero County, city folks, county folks, anybody who wants to be involved in those solutions can meet and sort of pull that data together and work together. We are sending that out as the primary next step to the folks who attended the stakeholders' meeting that we put on in March. We are so hopeful that the city can have a presence there and be a part of that event as well. I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Nadia Sykes, and it still feels weird to stand here. But I really appreciate this opportunity. What I'm doing as part of the 100% Otero, and I'm mixed in with the housing summit and the things that we're doing in the community to try to make things better for the unsheltered, the unhoused, the homeless, et cetera, I'm reporting on a project that I've been doing since October in partnership with the New Mexico Health Department and the Counseling Center. I do a mobile outreach program. I ride around with two team members, usually one at a time, in rickety old vans with mobile outreach on the side. And what we do is follow up on rumors and information that there are homeless camps in and around Alamogordo. What we do, we are not permitted by the contract to give out anything like tents, tarps, shelters, sleeping bags, but I often feel like I'm the milk and cookie lady. We're out there, we try to provide resources, we talk to people, we engage with people, develop relationships, and then give out things like snacks, like I said, resources, hygiene kits, women's products, that sort of thing. But we also give out backpacks, and in the wintertime, gave out socks and hand warmers, hats and gloves, things like that. People welcome us. Everybody's been very kind. Of course, we're giving them things that make their life not comfortable, but a little less of a struggle. What we try to do is provide engagement. We listen, we look at them, we speak. And I've tried to find out what they really need. And not one person, to date, has told me that we need a shelter in Alamogordo. They like the fact that Runners Refuge was a temporary shelter, but nobody ever says we need a brick-and-mortar shelter. What people are mostly looking for, and I've spoken with Mayor Pro Tem McDonald and with Mayor Payne, with Commissioner Robinson, about the fact that they just want to feel safe. They need a safe place to be. They need something simple, like, just as, just an example. I'm walking into Walgreens one day as somebody's walking out, and there's a man laying on the sidewalk, who many of you probably, or probably saw. You haven't seen him lately. But the man walking outside to the man laying on the sidewalk, "Get a job." Well, all I could say as I was walking by is, sir, how do you expect him to get a job? He has no place to shower, no place to change clothes, no place to do his laundry, has a tough time finding things to eat, and how is he going to work without showering and looking unpresentable? How do you expect people to do that? So, simple things, an area to clean up, not facing a sign that says, "No bathing," at a public restroom, a place where they can do their laundry. And Austin, Texas, provided something I think was very innovative, and I've been looking into the cost, where they've set up storage units, 300-gallon, looked like trash cans, but they're storage units so that people who are homeless have a place to put their shopping carts during the day, to put their stuff. All the time, I'm hearing, "My stuff got stolen." And if you only have minimal stuff, to have your stuff stolen can be pretty traumatic. We, at the Counseling Center, as part of this project, have put together a closet, and I really do encourage people, if you know somebody who needs clothing, essentials, not as much as Love Ink can provide, because they do a lot of appliances and furniture, but we do clothing, shoes, that sort of thing. Encourage people to come by to get free stuff. But in the meantime, what I'd like to do, the contract ends the end of June, and what I'd like to do at that time is come back and just tell you my results. For example, majority of the people are from here. Majority of them have quit high school at 10th or 11th grades. And most of them have experienced, as you probably know, childhood trauma and dysfunctional families. So just wanted to update you on that. Currently, I deal on a regular basis with about 35 people. And I know I see new homeless people all the time. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I will be back in June. And I know Peg only has a minute and 20 seconds.
That's okay. I was going to update you on the PIT count, but because I don't have the final numbers yet from the state, I'll come back another day and do that. So I just wanted to say today, you know, this housing, homelessness, affordable housing, all these things are such a big issue that none of us as individuals or all of the nonprofits that work for it in town are work against it, not for it. You know, we can't do it, but I'm so happy to be in Otero County and in Alamogordo where collectively, we can do it. There's so many good people doing good work that I'm looking forward to it, and thanks for all the city does. And we'll be back and tell you the real results from the PIT count. So thank you very much.
Thank you. 35 seconds. Just kidding. Just kidding. No, we're good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nobody had any questions, right? All right, well, thank you for that. Let's see. We are going to move on now to public comment. I have one person signed up. Now, you're signed up under item 10. Do you want to just wait, Gary, and talk about it under item 10? Is that okay? Okay, I think this will go pretty quickly, so. All righty. With that, we're going to move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor members of the commission, a few things. I sent you the weekly report. I don't have a lot of new information, but I want to comment on the 100% Otero to let you know that the staff is working diligently on some of these issues that have been discussed. And we recognize how important many of these issues are to the commission and to the community. So Stephanie is doing a tremendous job on evaluating some of the programs and the opportunities that are out there for us to look at. I do want to comment that we often receive comments about our housing ordinance being outdated and not usable. The housing ordinance, although old, is still functional. It does not disqualify us from any federal funding or opportunities that may be out there. There may be a time where we want to update it, but we can still move forward with that process. We're looking at a number of housing situations, some infill housing, some affordable or attainable housing, because we all probably agree there's no such thing as affordable housing. But there is probably some attainable housing and some price ranges that would be achievable by people that otherwise might not be able to. So we're working with some developers and on some potential opportunities there through that program. The next thing I want to just mention briefly is, at the last meeting, I know we had some emotional dialogue, a lot about some of the speeding issues and some of the other issues that are going on in our community. We had a, what I'll call a very brave, courageous group of folks from Incredible Court that came and spent some time with you and voiced their opinions. And I know some of the commissioners, you met with some of those folks outside afterwards. And after that, I know the chief was also involved in some of those discussions. And he and I had some good discussion about it following the commission meeting last month. Since that time, I want you to understand that our police department just does a tremendous job. They don't always get a lot of credit for what they do. They have a lot of things going on here, a lot of which you don't know about. You do get a chance to see the daily reports and some of the things going on. But just for instance, between March 29th and April the 9th, for about 11 days, the guys worked and ladies worked, about 23 crashes. They made 230 traffic stops during that period, and there were 79 citations issued. There were also 668 calls for service. So imagine the staff handling that number of calls for service. And those could be anything that might involve the police department during an 11-day period. The next 11-day period, beginning on 4/10 and through the 21st, there were still a lot of crashes, 21 crashes. There were 497 traffic stops, more than double what had been done in the previous 11 days. And there were 228 citations issued during that same period of time. So I think it's important to note that our PD is all over town all hours of the day and night for many, many reasons. And they're relentless in what they do. They can't always get everywhere they need to get to as timely as what sometimes we may think they need to be somewhere. They're out working on a crash, and they get another call for another crash. At the same time, they get one of the 668 or 779 calls for service. So that means an officer or more have to go to one of those locations. So I don't think that you're going to see that the PD is not doing anything. But we want to make sure that you understand that and that our citizens know that we're looking after their best interest. I want to talk specifically, just a moment, about Incredible Court. There were a lot of assertions made at that meeting, and you heard a lot of those. Since then, officers have gone out and particularly looked at the parked vehicles and those issues, and there were six citations issued for those. If those folks don't comply with those citations, then we'll be in a towing mode. Code enforcement subsequently has gone out and dealt with any issue that they can deal with in that particular area. I think it's great that people will let us know what's going on. And in those situations where you don't feel like we're making headway or we're not getting where we need to get to, you know, please let the city manager's office know and/or the chief, so that we can take proactive steps to do these things. But I did want you to know that we took that meeting very serious last month and have begun to do some things that we think will be impactful. The chief and I have spent considerable other time talking about opportunities for some overtime situations and some grants that we can utilize that will allow our officers to work overtime on some selective traffic enforcement programs and some things that we otherwise might not be able to do. So we're continuing to look at opportunities to enhance the law enforcement efforts and to help make us safer and feel safer about what we do. So with that, that's all I have for the comments tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody have any questions? No? All righty. We're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission.
I just got one.
Yes, Commissioner Riden.
With budget hearings coming up next month, I was approached by a couple of people that live over here in my district about, now that we own the Oregon School area there, when we have these tennis tournaments, you know, I grew up right there in that neighborhood, but when we have these tennis tournaments, Oregon Avenue, right there in that section, is almost impassable when they're parked on both sides. And one of the guys that lives over in that neighborhood, I was talking to him the other day, and he said, "Why can't we take that northern end of the Oregon, the old playground, and turn that into a parking lot for, just for those tournaments?" You know, it doesn't have to be anything fancy, you know, maybe just pull the fence down a little bit there and then just do a gravel parking lot, just as an overflow. But if that's something we could look at, maybe getting a cost for. The last time we did one was down here at the rec center across the street. We got it paved. It used to be a gravel parking lot, and we got it paved. And we just did it in-house with city staff and, you know, back then. And I think it costs like 50 grand or something like that. But if we could look into what that would run, and if we can find a little extra money or whatever, and the commission agrees, maybe look at doing that, just to ease the congestion there during those tennis tournaments.
Okay, we certainly can do that. I will visit with the park staff, Parks Board if necessary. Obviously, the finances and those things. We'll see what options there may be for that area. I'm familiar with it. I don't know the ifs, ands, and buts of the specific spot, but we will check on that. And I'll get back with the commission at the next meeting. If not before, I'll send you a note or something to let you know where we're at on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just want to follow up real quick on what you said. I don't, I just, and I'll just speak only for me, but I never, I under, first of all, I'm on the PSAT board, so I know the amount of calls that we get in the city, and they're incredible. I mean, the amount of calls that Dispatch Center takes in a month from the, for city calls alone is just unimaginable, quite honestly. And I mean, you know, I don't know how, I don't want to say they're all not legitimate, but you know what I mean, like, some are more serious than others. And so I do know how busy they are, and I don't, gosh, I can't even imagine. I can't even imagine what, you know. And so I think for me, my issue is not, it's not that I don't think they're doing enough. I think that I'm, I want to have the dialogue, because I think if we can, you know, first of all, we're not allowed to speak about it with each other unless it's in an open meeting. So I think that that's really important for everyone to understand. And I'm hoping that by doing some of the stuff in our open meetings that maybe collectively, we can help come up with a solution, you know. So that's where I'm at, that's where I come from this. I, because I do get a lot of calls, and man, the calls have just increased, just the complaints and the calls, and people don't understand. If you, if you're not involved, if you're not law enforcement, or if you're not part of the city, you may not understand. And, you know, I have to tell people all the time, it's not always what you think. You think that, you know, we're letting them go and we're not doing anything, but you don't know that they're citing them into court, or you don't, you know, it's like with code enforcement, right? They don't know that they're being cited into court because, because they don't know, because, you know. And so, so anyway, I just, I wanted to make that clear. I don't ever want you to think that, that, you know, again, I'm not going to speak for anybody else up here but for myself. I don't ever want you to think that I think they're not doing enough. I do think they're doing enough. I'm just hoping that we, as a commission or as a city, can come up with a solution, because it is getting bad. And I can't even argue. I can't even argue, because it is, it's getting bad. It's not anybody's fault, it's not that anybody's doing anything wrong. It's human nature, and I don't know what's going on with the humans around here lately, but it's, it's, it's not good. So my issue is not Incredible Court. I've told you before, my issue is Tinsley Trailer Park. And, you know, I'd like to tell you what I'm praying for with that trailer park, but I'm not going to say it. And we're just going to hope that we can come up with a solution for that, because I think that, that is a huge issue. That's a huge issue for me. So, anyway, I just wanted to tell you that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Having said that, we are going to, does anybody else have anything? Anybody? No? Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson.
Aye.
Mark Tapley.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Riden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to new business, item nine, consider an act upon the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And Jackie Fishman? And Belinda Bindy? Would you rather go by Bindy or Belinda? I don't even know, I'm sorry.
It's, it's either.
I've heard both, so, okay.
So.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Payne and commissioners. For the last year, we've been working on the, what was formerly called the Community Services Master Plan, but with Parks and Recreation. It's now the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Community Services does have one portion in it, it's the zoo. Jackie Fishman from Consensus has done an amazing job of putting this together. It's a ton of data, all compiled in one very large but easy-to-read format. And she's here to present some of the highlights.
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners. As Belinda said, my name is Jackie Fishman. I'm a principal at Consensus Planning, and we are a consulting firm based out of downtown Albuquerque. And by means of reintroduction, Consensus Planning wrote your comprehensive plan several years ago and the downtown MRA plan. So very pleased to have been chosen to write this important plan. I am here by myself, but by no means did I do the project by myself. So in addition to my staff at Consensus Planning, we also had subconsultants from Smith Engineering Company and Formative Architecture. So, let's see. All right. I've got to change two things at once. Okay, so our project started sometime in January of last year. We started with designing a community survey. We put that on Survey Monkey, had it also available by hard copy. 226 people took the survey. The survey ran from mid-April to the end of May of last year. The survey ran from mid-April to the end of May of last year. We had hundreds of written comments, and all the results are in the master plan and the appendices. Findings from the survey actually were incorporated into the master plan document. All right. So our project team of all three firms are, and, you know, we, my, my firm is, we are planners and landscape architects, and then obviously the engineering and architectural components of the team. We all visited all of the community facilities to inventory all the conditions and amenities provided in those facilities. We had two, two-day site visits, one in March and then another in April. We visited the zoo, the golf course, parks, the cemetery, Medians, Bonito Lake. It was quite the, the site visit. We also interviewed managers and took notes and photos and met people on the street and really had a good time doing that. So this slide simply shows all your community facilities, the parks, the Medians, the cemetery, the zoo, and so on. And this is a map that's placed in the, in the document itself. In terms of the overall contents, it's a big document. It's a couple hundred pages. There's a lot of detail in it. We have an analysis of population characteristics, household characteristics, economic characteristics as planners. That's what we do in all of our documents. We also have an inventory and the assessment of each of the community facilities owned and managed by the city. We also did a level of service analysis which looked at what you're providing the community now and how that compares to other similarly sized communities around the country. We also looked at, you know, different park amenities like basketball courts and softball fields and, you know, all kinds of different amenities in parks, and then also staffing levels. We also looked at analysis of a geographic distribution of parks. We, as planners, we look at how accessible parks are to, to the community, and there's an idea out there that, that everybody should be able to walk with, to a park within a ten-minute walk. Oh. I think this just went off. Oops. Oh, okay, there we go. So we have a prioritized list of recommendations for improvements to all the facilities. Each and every one is highlighted in the master plan. We have sorted it by short and long-term timeframes. We also have the summary of the community survey results, cost estimates, it's pages and pages and pages of cost estimates in the appendices for Phase One improvements. We also include funding resources in, in one of the appendices as well that identify a variety of different entities and methods for funding improvements to parks and other Now, the next few slides are the key findings from all of our work. Bear with me, it's a lot of information. Basically, your, your population has been generally very stable. It's a modest growth of 3.4% over a 10-year period between 2011 and 2021. That's not, not incredibly strong growth. The current distribution of facilities doesn't really provide the, the opportunity for equal access by all community members. We believe the city should plan ahead and acquire more land and develop new facilities in some of those areas that are currently underserved. That uneven distribution makes it sometimes challenging for Alamo Gordo youth to access some of the facilities without being driven by their parents or other family members. So we, we really believe in that equitable distribution of, of facilities. Needless to say, the, the zoo is much loved by everybody, so we, we got really strong results from the community survey on the zoo. It's the most frequently used facility. Residents want to see improvements to the zoo. We, our facility evaluations, which was, you know, pretty, pretty intense, revealed a lot, a large number of areas and animal enclosures that need improvement, and we believe that that should be one of the city's top priorities when you start making some of these changes at facilities. The rec center also is another facility that, that was highly valued by the community, as evidenced by the, the survey. We believe that continued maintenance and improvement to make sure that this facility remains in good condition should also be a priority. There's a strong desire by the community to expand indoor recreation and activities. We believe that the city should consider doing a future rec center in a currently underserved area of the community. You probably know this, swimming is a very popular activity for, for the residents. A large portion of the community uses the outdoor swimming pool at the rec center, and there's a current unmet need for indoor swimming. So the city owns and manages 30 park facilities that are mostly characterized as, as community parks. They are much loved and valued by the community. We determined that the city provides a fairly high level of service as compared to other communities of its size in regard to the number of parks, and also a fairly high LOS or level of service for parkland acres, baseball and softball fields, and tennis courts. There, but again, you know, while overall there's a high level of service being provided, there are geographic service gaps in, in the community, and mostly in the northern part of Alamo Gordo and then the southern area of Alamo Gordo. Many of the parks, or many of the playgrounds and parks have issues with accessibility and safety. The Kid Zone is the city's only accessible park, and we strongly believe that as landscape architects, that the city should develop a system or a schedule for playground inspections and improvements to ensure the safety standards are being met. None of the restroom facilities in, in the, in the various community facilities meet ADA accessibility standards as determined by our project architects. We, we think that a program to improve restroom accessibility should be undertaken. Walking and hiking are two of Alamo Gordo community's most popular leisure activities. There's a strong community desire to expand the trail system. There are a myriad of many, many improvements needed at Desert Springs Golf Course. It could be a result of deferred maintenance, but we, we, you know, we have that all listed in, in the document. While all, all facets of the community don't use the golf course, it does bring visitors and spending to Alamo Gordo, so we think that's a good thing. Bonito Lake, a very special facility, and we, you know, our team really enjoyed our visit there. Well, the, the current priority is to replace the existing road, and we've had to divide that into several phases because it's so expensive to do the road. There's a great need to improve your campgrounds and, and other facilities so that it can be reopened to the public for day use, overnight camping, hiking, and fishing. So those are all the key findings. So our priorities for improvements, we did facilitate meetings with both departments, Community Services and Parks and Recreation, to determine what those priorities should be. The master plan contains a write-up for each facility, includes acreage, main features, existing conditions, and then identifies short and long-term priorities. Facilities such as the zoo, the golf course, and Bonito Lake have their own chapters, given the amount of detail and, and improvements needed at, at each of those. This slide just simply shows a two-page spread for Alameda Park, just to give you, and I'm assuming you've seen it in, in your, your packet, but it, it just shows you what, what we've done for, for each of the facilities. Our Phase One recommendations are based mostly on immediate needs, so things like safety issues and, you know, things like that, issues with animals at the zoo are really, you know, obviously pretty immediate needs. We focus on, again, increasing safety, accessibility, and maintaining facilities. Both departments, directors and managers provided input. They were great to work with and really appreciated all their, their time. We did, and all of our cost estimates include a 30% contingency because obviously construction is just going up and up and up. So we, we wanted to build that into the numbers. So that's, that's in all of, all of the many pages of, of cost estimates. With that, I'd like to thank you all, thank all of your staff for working with our team. I'm ready, and I'm sure Ronnie and Belinda are also ready for any questions you might have. Our next steps are to finalize the master plan, take the word draft off every page, and then final delivery to, to you all.
Anybody have any questions?
If you don't mind, would you also change that from desert lakes, or to desert lakes from Desert Springs Golf Course?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just, just, just being sure there, I thought maybe our lakes had dried up and we'd gone to springs.
It's not entirely impossible.
Yes.
We're just developing new water sources.
Does anybody have any questions? So I'm, nobody? I'm going to ask a question. Okay, just checking. So you're saying underserved areas, I'm assuming you mean like way south of town or way north of town? Is that?
Yeah, so you're.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking, too.
Your, your parks are really mostly central to the, the city, and so you have subdivisions that aren't close to, to any parks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. So only 226 people took the survey? So it's really hard to gauge from, yeah.
Yeah, I wish it were more.
Yeah, because I don't know about my fellow commissioners, but I get emails that are all over the map. I get, "We don't need a pool. We can't build a pool. We shouldn't have a pool. It's a waste of money," to, "We've got to have a pool. We need a covered pool." I mean, you know, we're just, and everything in between, right? And so, and I'm in the "we need a pool" camp, so, you know, that's, that's just me. But, but, I don't know. It's interesting. I'm just disappointed that only 226 people took the survey because I don't know, in a city of 31,000, it's really hard to tell what our priorities are. But, anyway. Well, thank you. And nobody else has any questions?
What surprised you the most with this study?
Well, I, I, I mean, and I've been familiar with the city of Alamo Gordo by, because of my experience with the comprehensive plan especially, but my, my surprise was you have nice facilities, you have some of everything, and, you know, you seem to be serving the community pretty well. And, and I, I work all over the state of New Mexico in small and large communities, and I think Alamo Gordo does a very nice job. So that, that was a little surprising to me. Not, not because of Alamo Gordo, but because some of your counterparts.
I'm not sure how to take that, but, okay.
Yeah. I, I said there in the wrong way, but, but other, other communities around New Mexico lack a lot of those kind of facilities. So I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's good to hear. I think we do a good job, too. Okay. Anybody, I'm sorry.
You said all of our restroom facilities in our parks aren't ADA compliant.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The, the brand-new one at the balloon park would almost have to be.
I think that if it's a brand-new facility, probably.
Yeah, we built that about a year ago, a year and a half? I was, it's been about a year and a half, I think, since we built. That one would have to be ADA compliant.
Yeah. Though all, all the other ones aren't, and they're, they're really all the same. And, yeah, that's, and the architects on the team went into pretty great detail about where, where they fall short for accessibility.
That's an ever-changing game, you know what I mean? As you, you know, you can start a project and the ADA rules will change in the middle of it, so. But it's just, that's stuff we, we've had problems in the past, keeping up with like ADA ramps and stuff on our streets and that, but that's just kind of a little bit concerning.
Yeah. Accessibility in, into the parks or, you know, that is, that is a concern, and not a lot of the playground equipment is accessible, not a lot of the, the picnic tables and things like that aren't really accessible.
For, like, wheelchair access?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm learning a lot on this job. Are there grants or incentives to improve ADA-compliant restrooms or park areas?
Specifically for ADA, I'm, I'm not really sure about that, but there, the, the document does include funding sources. I don't know if New Mexico Outdoor Recreation Division may support that. I'm also working for the city of Clovis on a big park master plan, a single park, very big, 3,200 acres, and their grant that they got from Outdoor Recreation was a lot based on accessibility and ADA.
I know there's some out there.
So that's something that we have opportunity to explore?
Yes.
I know that the outdoor, I, well, I don't know that. I know that at one time there was. I'm going to assume that those grants are still available because I remember us talking about those, so. And it looks like our assistant city manager has something to say about that because she probably remembers us talking about it as well, so.
So I did want to follow up. Excuse my voice, it's coming back, okay? So I'm not as squeaky as I was yesterday. Follow up on your comment, yes, unfortunately, we didn't get a big participation in, in the survey. We did push it out everywhere anyway. We asked chambers, we asked everybody to push it out. However, I think the numbers are supported because if you look at our admissions to the zoo and to the rec center, those are our highly visited facilities, including the library as well, and we got the managers there if you want to follow up with what they think the, the participation is. As far as ADA and grants, we used to put that on our ICIP listing, but we had to take it off because we never had a formalized plan or any shovel-ready. We just wanted, we would ask for $300,000 for ADA compliance. Now that we have actually something in writing, sorry, I squeaked, that will be approved by the commission, we now have opportunities for going out for not just ICIP but other grant funding because one of our biggest issues is we don't have something in place. We have ideas, but we don't have something in place. So this will help us in a lot of areas of seeking additional funding from the state from the grant, and there is right now a big push for outdoor recreation, so.
Yeah, and I.
Thank you.
I think it's important that people understand that a lot of these grants, you have to be shovel-ready. You've got to be ready to go. You can't just have an idea and say, "Oh, I'm going to apply for a grant for this idea." It has to be something that if they fund you, you're ready to start building, and I think that's why, that's why this is so good because we, we haven't really had that plan up until now, which is why we have to pass on, on some of those, those dollars, and so. But I think now that we have this plan in place, maybe we'll be more equipped to.
And then just to prove how important it is, we, you support us an email, I believe, Mayor Procham also, from, I can't remember who it was from.
Can I have a second, ma'am?
About if we had, they had additional funding. So we took some of the elements from the master plan, although it's not approved, we knew that we. knew that we wanted to have a-
Gabe Basquez's office?
Yes, and that we took what was in here, and we knew we wanted to go move forward on getting Inclusion Park, I believe is what it's called, at the rec center.
Right, at the rec center.
So that's how important this is to us, because we, it gives us a plan, and when these things pop up, 'cause they pop up randomly, and we get them more often than you think, "Do you have anything ready to go?" I think this is a perfect, this is our perfect plan to say, "Yes, we do."
Yeah. Yes, thank you for pointing that out, because it looks like that may be going through, and so, yeah, and that, I was excited to see that, so. All right. Anybody else?
Thank you, good job.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We are gonna move on to-
Do we need to approve that, or is this considered an act upon?
Oh, do we need to approve it?
Is considered an act upon, so.
Probably do.
Probably do, okay.
Move to approve.
Okay, hold on just a second. Do I have to read my rules again? 'Cause if I do, I will. All right. Moving on. Do I have a motion to approve item nine? Or accept the Parks and Rec Master Plan?
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Protem McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, seven-zero. We're gonna move on to item 10. Discussion, discussion and provide staff with direction on recent theft and speeding issues, and I'm gonna go ahead and start with our public comments. We have one signed up under this item, Gary Trinkle. You wanna come on up? You'll get three minutes, and if you'll state your name for the record, please.
What I wanna talk about is all the burglaries going on in town, and if you get on something like Alamogordo City Watch Group, which I don't participate in, but I read a bunch of comments, it's just getting out of hand, it's gotten out of hand, and in my opinion, most of these are being carried out by a bunch of tweakers, a bunch of drug addicts, or whatever you wanna call them. That's the lifestyle they choose, to get up every morning, put on their backpacks, get on their bicycles, and rob people blind. I have a lot of houses here in town that's rentals, I've lost tenants because of break-ins, I've been broken twice, my son's been broken twice, I have, I've had him steal carpet out of empty houses, I've had him shoot holes in empty houses with people in them, and at some point, something's gotta give, and I don't know what the answer is, but I know in my business, if I couldn't get enough people, I would offer more money to try to attract more people. Of course, I had to make the customers pay for that, and I hear a lot about how the Alamogordo law enforcement, the police are understaffed. You gotta figure out a way to get more law enforcement here, whether that's raising our taxes, or grocery receipts, or whatever you gotta do, but I hear all this talk about everything tonight, but one of the main things is, you ought to be able to feel safe in your town, and right now, these guys are walking around, riding around on bicycles, breaking into houses and businesses in broad daylight, 'cause they don't care. And I don't know what the answer is, but something's gotta be done, and I know it might be easier said than done, but there's gotta be an answer, and it's not, it's not, it's not counseling or anything like that. I mean, I don't know if they're being let loose in the courts again, or what's happening, but they're getting away with it right now, and they're just robbing everybody blind. And it's, I don't know what else to say, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. If you guys knew how many houses are getting broke into on a daily basis, I mean, there's, it's ridiculous anymore. As far as the speeding goes, it's, the reason why you guys are having a bunch of bad accidents now is a lot of times, if you're in a 35 mile an hour zone and you're pulling out, you see a car come, and you're not expecting that car to be doing 65, and that's why, that's why everybody's getting T-boned, and the accidents have got worse. But like I said, I don't know what needs to be done to get more law enforcement, but I'm willing to pay my share if you raise my property taxes or whatever, so be it. I'd rather live in a town that at least you don't have to worry about getting robbed every time you go out of your house, or somebody breaking into your house while you're in it, and it's only a matter of time before they break into the wrong house, and somebody's gonna be there, and somebody's gonna get hurt, and it'll happen, it's just a matter of when.
Thank you.
But-
Just an FYI, we actually did already do that last summer, raise taxes so that we could-
Raise them again.
It's not that easy. It's not that easy. But I do believe that it's working.
I know it's not that easy, but-
I do believe it's working, yeah.
But, the only, the way to get more people, it's to pay them more, you know, and do something.
Cooney's behind you with his arms up. Be quiet, Cooney.
Mayor, Commissioners, I wanna mention, Gary came down to the office, and he met with Commissioner Raredon and myself. We had a, we had a very nice meeting and talked about a lot of the issues that Gary mentioned to you there. Subsequently, I've spent some time with the chief, and so, the awareness is certainly appreciated. I know, Gary, you had hoped to have several others here to speak their minds, similar to the Incredible Court Group last month that came in, but we appreciate you taking the time to come in. Josh, you may have some issues.
I've been chewed on by numerous of the, and this is more in the building community, because we've been hit pretty hard. I've been hit twice at my shop. I know Abe Moore's been hit about 10 or 11 times over there, Tom Eldredge over there's been hit 10 or 12 times, the RV storage place right behind his shop's been hit numerous times. I know Just Store it over here's been hit a bunch of different times, and it's just frustrating, because as business owners, you know, our insurance costs have just escalated year after year, and then every time we make a claim, it just ups those insurance costs even more, and the purpose of this even being on the agenda is more to just start talking about it, see what it is as a legislative branch that we can do to help DPS, you know, can we tighten up some ordinances, or since we're home rule, can we do something above and beyond what the state's allowing us to do? Those kind of questions, and that's the reason I put this on here, and, you know, like, I wasn't even planning on going to this meeting with Mr. Trinkle and the city manager, I just happened to be here when they were having it, so, but, I just know from the builder's side of it, and, you know, the job sites, the thefts, you know, and we're talking, we're not talking a couple hundred bucks, we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars. You know, just the one time they hit me out there, they got me for five grand, I mean, and it's just one of those things, you know, so, but, if staff can kinda brainstorm and see what it is, I mean, and it may be as simple as a neighborhood watch program, starting to institute those. You know, I get up early in the morning to go to work, and, you know, I see every now and then, I'll see a kid walking up the street with a backpack and a mask on his face, and we all know he's not walking to school, you know? We know he's been out causing trouble all night, 'cause I leave at around 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, and, you know, and then, I've also heard a rumor that, and I think David Black had mentioned this to one of the other gentlemen that had talked to me, is that we, he said we only have two officers on streets at night, but I don't believe that's true. I, we probably have, what, at least 10 or 15 out there? Or not that many? How many?
Four and a sergeant, I believe, at night?
Probably normally four and a sergeant.
Okay, so four regular officers, and then one sergeant, and then the lieutenants and stuff are all during the day, or?
Depending on the shift that you go home at, nine or 11, it depends on.
Okay. Okay. All right, but, yeah, that's just the purpose of this, just to get the discussion going. I mean, I basically mentioned the speeding part of it at the last meeting, and, you know, and I agree with Mr. Trinkle, I think that that's contributing to a lot of these bad accidents we've been having. You know, if we can just, we've got a lot of out-of-towners that come in, and they're used to freeways in Phoenix and back east, and they come to our little old town, and I think they're out on, you know, one of these interstates, and we're on a regular highway, you know, so, and, maybe a couple citations might slow them down a little bit and get them to realize that they need to drive a little slower, so.
I do know that the chief and I have talked about that, and there are some, there are some things I mentioned a while ago, some of the overtime programs and things that are available that are grant-funded, that we can utilize to our benefit to increase some of those patrols and things for speeding and such as that, so, we're working on those, and in fact, I've already approved one of those from my office to allow that grant to come into play, so that we can step up some of that enforcement activity. And we also wanna encourage, and I know we had this conversation, Gary, we've gotta be sure that people know that they need to definitely report these incidents and issues so that we have a good record of it, and if somebody believes that the officers are not following up, we need to make a direct call to the chief or to me, so that we can follow up with dates and times and incidents, so that the chief can, and the DC can follow up to find out whether these calls are coming in and who's getting them, and we're not intentionally overlooking any of those things, so we need you to call. You know, Gary, tell folks out there, don't hesitate to call, but if you don't call, then they certainly don't have any way to respond. Chief, did you have anything you want to add?
I just have a little bit of data that I can make-
Chief, can you come up to the-
Yeah, that way you can be on the record, and Rachel will know how to record all this for the-
I do know, the first time I was hit out there, when I reported it to DPS, the officer wouldn't even come out to the place. It was only like 500 bucks, it was a couple of car batteries, so it was like $500, but basically what he told me is, "Get online, you can report it there," and that looks bad to the constituents and to the people, when an officer doesn't wanna take the time to come out there. You know, you can get online and do it, and it's like, "Yeah, I can," but, you know, that one was a petty one, it was only like 450, 500, like, say, but the second time they hit me out there, they did come out, had a couple officers, 'cause they hit a couple areas, or a couple places in there, so, but.
Good evening, David Cooney, Sheriff, Police Chief, Alamogordo Police Department, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioner, City Manager. I just wanted to share some data, but to your point regarding the, them having you file it or suggesting you file it online, the direction for the officers is that's an option that we can offer the citizens, but if they want an officer to respond, we will respond. So I would encourage, if you or your constituents are saying that we refuse to respond, please let me or our supervisor know so we can handle that situation, because not everyone has the ability to file an online report, and some people just don't wanna do it. So we will show up, of course, based on the priority of calls, and take a report, so I apologize for that. Just some general numbers that I thought, just some food for thought and some consideration. In 2023, we took 35,000 calls for service, and I'm just gonna round some numbers. 35,000 calls for service means we average about 3,000 incidents a month. When I'm saying we have four officers and a sergeant most of the time working, 3,000 calls a month, we can do the math, it's a lot of calls, and a call can range from a couple minutes for a no-report, to two or three officers on a call for five, six, seven hours, depending, right? So there's just, there's so many variables in there as relates to a specific incident, and I share with Mr. Trinkle, it does seem like the burglaries are increasing, there's a lot of people wandering the streets at night, there's a lot of things. I pulled some quick data, I was surprised as well, it looks like the burglaries, so year-to-date, from January to the present in '23 compared to January to the present in '24, our burglaries and breaking and enterings are up 25%, but the auto burglaries and vehicle thefts are, auto burgs are down 35%, and vehicle theft is down 26%. So, yes, the victim still feels it, right? Whether it's one or 100 of them reported, I get it, the victim, I empathize with the victim that my-
So they went from cars to buildings?
That's what it seems, and we have a lot of vacant buildings around town, we take a lot of calls in vacant buildings, and so, you know, just some things to consider. We do take all crime seriously, we might not always have the resources to put an officer to directly in an area for an entire shift or whatever, but like the city manager talked about, since the last meeting, I shared in the concerns with the lack, or with the way people were driving around town, so we did what we called kind of some directed patrol, and we directed it towards White Sands, First Street, 10th Street, Indian Wells, where a lot of our crashes happened, and we doubled our traffic stops, and we almost tripled our citations that were issued. So what it didn't do in that timeframe is really decrease the crashes, but that impact is gonna take, we're gonna have to show some consistency with enforcement to really show, have an impact on the community. So I stand for any questions, I just wanted to share some data with you.
Yeah, I was surprised when you started talking about crashes. What is wrong with people, honestly? I, I'm so blown away that in our little, how many did you say? In the last 10 days?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one in an 11-day period.
In the last 10 days, 23, and as far as-
21 crashes in 10 days, that's an average of two a day?
It probably contributes to a lot of its distracted driving, you know?
Absolutely.
A lot of it has to do, and we're all guilty of it.
I think distracted and impaired driving.
And impaired, you know, and everybody's in a hurry, you know, it seems like everybody's in too big a hurry to get where they're going, and, you know, to take a chance, and then it ends up turning into an accident, but, with budget hearings coming up, you know, a lot of the smaller stuff, you know, these service aids, I remember we used to call them baby cops, I don't, but, could we look at maybe adding more of those, since they're not a true certified officer, but they could handle a lot of that smaller stuff, like the reports, I mean, is that what they're being utilized?
Sure, so, we have four spots right now, I think that's plenty, we just have vacancies. We have vacancies now, because two now fixing to be three of them have transferred over to a police officer position. So we're in the process of looking at four to five applicants and filling three spots.
Okay.
So that's why you probably don't see them as much, but that's fixing to-
That was the purpose when we created that, was to try to alleviate that small workload on you guys, of the stuff that's not as important.
Yes, sir.
So y'all can handle the actual stuff. Just trying to brainstorm a little bit, so we can figure out how to get a handle on this, before it gets way out of hand, you know? There's some stuff that's happened in Alamo in the last four to five years, and it makes you think you're in Albuquerque, you know, it's-
Yeah, and, you know, we're not unique to other parts of the state, no, other parts of the country, but it does hit home when it's happening here. We always have said, it doesn't happen in our little town, and then it does, so.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think it's something we're not used to here, and now we're seeing it, and I think that's just the times, but my biggest concern, I, traffic crashes are a concern for me, but my bigger concern are these break-ins, because they're getting to be more and more, and it's like, they know what time to break into a building. I mean, that's how it appears, and I'm not saying that that's the case, I'm just saying that they know. Now, I will say that, you know, 'cause I see the comments, too, and it's, "Well, the police won't do anything, I didn't bother to call." Well, that's just, I'm sorry, but that's just dumb. You need to call, you've got to call, because the flip side of that is, if you don't call, then there's no record of it. If there's no record of it, then it appears, you know, we're going down by this much of a percentage or this much. You've gotta call, and I would say, for anybody watching, or anybody that watches later, just as you said, if you don't get the result you're looking for, then, then go higher up, and if you have to, call one of us, and we'll go higher up for you, but, but I think it's important, because my concern is for our contractors. I will tell you, as a nonprofit, I have video of somebody jumping the wall, why they would want all those donations in the back of our building, I have no idea, and, and I did what you said, this was last year, and I got online and I reported it and uploaded the video, and I didn't get a response back, and, you know, for me, it's like, listen, if you wanna steal donations, then you're just taking from people who might need it. I mean, it didn't cost us anything, right? It's more, to me, uncomfortable, it's an uncomfortable position to be in, knowing when people are rummaging through- position to be in, knowing when people are rummaging through our building at night or whatever. I mean, that's, that's uncomfortable for me. But, but I am concerned because I think that the, the issue with the contractors, I think that's getting to be a bit much, and, and they have to make a living. And, you know, you can't make a living if all your stuff is getting stolen all the time. So, I don't know what the solution is to that, but that's really my focus is how do we, you know, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but I know that, I don't care who you are, it's not right to take something from somebody else that you didn't earn. And I, you know, and I'm being all Pollyanna about it, but I'm really not Pollyanna about it. I'm saying that our contractors, you know, just anybody, anybody, you know, you work for your stuff, and I don't appreciate people just thinking they can just break in and take what they want. And what are they doing with it? Well, they're likely selling it to feed a habit, right? And I don't, I don't want to make that assumption, but I think it's a pretty safe assumption. And so, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is to that, but I do know for me, that's a huge focus. We can't, I just, I, I can't deal with that. That's just, that's just crazy that, that. And, and quite frankly, it's a little embarrassing. It is. It's a little embarrassing that the same people are getting hit over and over. And I'm like, okay, why are you getting hit 10 times, Abe Moore? Because we can't seem to catch whoever it is. I don't know if it's the same person or a different person. I, I have no clue, but, but it would just seem to me that if he's been broken into 10 times, that might be an area where, where we need to show some focus or something. I don't know. I'm not going to tell you how to do your job. I can't, you know. I always joke around that I did get a criminal justice degree. I had never had any intention of being an officer, and I have the utmost respect for you because I...
The hard part is, is, you know, like, out there, it's just so random, you know, the area where, where my office is and stuff, it's, it's random. So, officers can't spend, you know, 30 days out there every night watching, you know. Sometimes it's at 11 o'clock, sometimes it's 2:00. You know, I catch them on the cameras, but can't tell who they are. Same thing with, with Donald Plumbing over there. They can see them on the cameras. Same thing over here at Just Door. So, but...
I, I think the hard part is, is just like Abe's, Abe's is right out in the middle of open.
Yeah.
My house, there was a guy in the back of my truck.
Yeah.
Right there in Florida. Fifty cars driving by. I mean, they could care less that they can be seen. They don't care.
Yeah. No, I agree.
I've had two generators, three bikes, a three-compartment sink stole out of the front yard. People drive by.
Well, somebody dropped something off at your house and then it got stolen or something.
Yeah, the three-compartment sink got dropped off at my house and got stolen.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it just...
We installed one of those Ring cameras at our house, and we get notifications of other areas, you know, around town within a certain radius of our place. And it's kind of concerning because there was a gentleman the other day on there, and he had his backpack, and he had a baseball bat slid between his back and the backpack, bald-headed guy. And I mean, he's walking right up to the doors, you know, and checking doors, checking the doors on the truck. I mean, it's, it's a clear picture of him. You can see the back of him. You can't see his face. But that, that they have that, that they'll just walk straight up to somebody's front door, you know, and that's a little concerning.
And we get a lot of Ring cameras and, and video surveillance, and we share it quite often within our department and with other law enforcement agencies and other resources.
See if they might recognize.
And sometimes we, just nobody knows who they are, or the picture is not good enough.
Yeah.
It could be a, might be a perfect picture, and we're like, I don't know who that is.
Yeah.
And nobody knows. So, it's, it's frustrating, for sure.
I was one today down at, where'd your husband used to work?
At Western Auto.
Western Auto. There was one, they had two of them on an aisle, and they zoomed in, and, you know, they were stealing from them right there in the middle of the day.
They were stealing paint or something, yeah.
And so, just to add just a little bit, over the past few weeks, we have been, had some burglaries reported. We, we have charged a group of juveniles who were doing some burglaries off of 18th Street. Last night, we had some burglaries and a stolen vehicle happen off of the First Street area. We recovered the stolen vehicle, and we put two juveniles in jail as a result of it, and we're still trying to put the pieces together of that investigation. So, some things do fall to, fall into place. But unfortunately, we cannot solve every single crime.
Is there anything that we can do to tighten up those ordinances? I mean, if it's juveniles, it's kind of a slap on the wrist, and they're probably just turning them right back out to mom and dad. Mom and dad aren't doing nothing. But is there anything as a, as a governing body that we can do to tighten that up to where, you know, where the punishment starts to fit the crime again? You know what I mean? If that makes sense.
You know, I don't think we really have much say-so in, in the actual punishment portion of it.
We can increase the penalties or fines or, or, similar to what we did where we can start going after the parents of these juveniles?
So, what we're, if we're talking specifically when we start dealing with burglaries, that's felonious crimes, and that is at the magistrate and district court level.
Okay.
So, that's, that's no dealing with the municipality in that case. I think we've been trying to do what we can do, and by way of the soliciting ordinances, the park ordinance, park closure ordinances and things of that nature. We're trying to kind of at least redirect. I don't know that we're going to ever stop it, but I think I would just encourage people to continue to report if we have issues, because we're going to have issues, our concerns with how an investigation's handled. I would ask that you suggest people go up the chain of command, maybe not directly to me every single time. That might be a lot of complaints. I'm willing to take them, but I'm not always available. So, you know, sergeants, lieutenants, and a deputy chief are definitely in place for that reason as well to handle those. So.
There's got to be a solution. There has to be a solution.
I think the legislative part moves is way higher than we are. I think that, that's obviously state level.
Let's say that one more time.
For legislative-wise, that's state level. I mean, it's...
Sure, and so the...
Depending on what they decide they're going to do is what we get to do, and right now, it's not very good.
It's not very good, yeah. And I've, I've said that many times to people that, you know, they want to, they want to, like, I don't care. You can yell at me. That's cool. I've got thick skin. But what I tell people is, if you want to make a change, that's why we have a state representative or state representatives. That's why we have state senators. That's why we have that, the state legislators, because that's where change is going to happen. It's not going to happen at the local level. We can only do what we can. So, with juveniles, I don't know if you know this or not, but we did impose or entiten three of our ordinances concerning juveniles, and one was that the parks are absolutely closed to them in the middle of the day during APS school hours. They're not allowed to hang out in our parks anymore unless they're supervised by an adult. And some people thought that was harsh, but I will tell you that I did try to get some numbers from APS. They're not there yet, but they, what I was told is they believe that that is working in terms of attendance. So, they believe that their attendance is increasing because of that. But they don't have any numbers yet. It's been obviously not long enough. We have our, what do we have, a curfew? If we find them out at, obviously, if we find them out at 2:00 in the morning, stealing and robbing, that's a whole other story. But they're not even allowed to be out after 11:00 at night on weekdays and midnight on weekends. And if they are caught, then their parents are fined, and their parents have to go in front of a judge. And that was another one of those where we had to take that sort of harder line, I would say. And then our ditches, of course. And I know that, that they're still trying to, trying to hang out in those ditches, but I also know that you guys are enforcing that, because I've been told that that's being enforced. So, really excited to hear that. And I think, but a lot of this stuff, we can't, it took us several months, several months just to come up with that and make sure that we were within what we could legally do. And so, you know, when you're talking about adults, it's even harder, right? We do have a little leeway with kids, but, but with adults, it just makes it harder. So, senators and future senators and, and state representatives, that's where we need to, to focus our attention, is, is really just advocating at that level, so.
Have you all noticed, is, is a majority of it juveniles that's doing it, or is it all over the place?
There's a mix. So, we, so, obviously, the just, the catch-and-release type things for not detaining someone who's not deemed as dangerous means we might arrest someone for pretty serious felony charges tonight, and tomorrow, they're out walking the streets again doing it. So, we struggle with detaining both juveniles or, and, and adults, actually. But there are, yes, there are lots of juveniles wandering around, and I, I attribute it to that they don't have a fear of consequence from the criminal justice system so much because it's tough to detain them as well.
Flap on the wrist and let them go, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I'll tell you that I worked with the Alamo Gordo Schools the other day. This is with my other hat, and we had a kid that, I mean, he just turned 18 in March, so I guess he's, in my, in my opinion, still a juvenile, but he had, he was released from CYFD. He'd been in the custody of CYFD for years, and he aged out, and they just like put him on the street.
Spooked him out.
You know, of course, he never learned anything while he was in CYFD custody. And then he had some friends, same thing, and these were juveniles. These were kids were like 16, 17 years old. And, and, you know, our system is broken, and I'm not, I'm not making excuses for these kids because they got to learn, and they need to learn one way or the other. And if that's, you know, being incarcerated for a little while, whatever. But, but it is a broken system. And so, I used to think it was always parents not, not taking care of their kids, but there's, it's way more complex than that sometimes. And that's not an excuse. They need to be held accountable, because if we don't start holding them accountable, they're just going to grow up to be, you know, criminal adults, right? I mean, they've got to be held accountable, but it's, it is so much more complex than what we even understand. So, anyway, very frustrating. I wish it was a better answer.
They just need to fear the punishment again, like it used to be, the old days.
Yeah. No, I agree. I agree.
Bottom line, you know. And in our area here, we're all more conservative, and if we could set the laws, it would be that way. But basically, you know, Santa Fe, Albuquerque, and Las Cruces essentially elect those, the leaders that are, that are writing all our laws.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is.
How much representation we have if they go up there and...
And just remember, other than traffic laws violations, municipal court doesn't hold jurisdiction over juveniles. It goes to district court and JPO for any delinquent acts.
All right.
I think the only solution really that I've heard tonight, the only viable solution is what city manager was talking about, and that's potentially overtime or, or getting more officers on the street, especially during those nighttime hours, because that seems to be when, when a lot of this is happening. And let's face it, five officers on the street is not enough. I think we can all agree on that. There's, you know, you can have one in Walker Town and one in Mesa Verde, and one up at the top of 10th Street and one down here on White Sands, and that's it. I mean, there's no way that, that that can be super effective, so.
The sheriff's office, how many do they have on staff at night?
So, so I'm not exactly sure. I think when you, when you discussed, maybe two. They might have two, what they call flats deputies. They have deputies assigned in Chaparral, and then on the mountain, one or two, but I don't know there's, how they staff.
I didn't know if we could maybe work like an MOU with them to help, some coverage or something at night, just till we can get a handle on it or something. But, and then what about state police at night, or do they take off?
So, I have asked state police to come assist with our traffic enforcement. They haven't, the, the local captain here said they've had some other obligations, but he fully intends on having, assisting us with some, some traffic enforcement in the very near future.
They've been doing it out on the highway out that way, but, say, I was out there working on a Saturday, man, there was one on a motorcycle. I swear, he wrote 50 citations out there that day, so.
I've asked for help, and so when, I guess when they have resources available, they'll get them in town.
Yeah, they've been doing those, whatever they are, you know, in each community, you'll read about it.
Like blitzes or something.
Yeah, those blitzes. So, but, once that's all over with, maybe, maybe they can give us a handle, but.
What are your current staffing levels at right now?
So, we have 47 sworn officers, but, so we've been doing good hiring them, but they're all, a lot of them are in the academy. So, we have technically 39 certified who can do the work right now, because six are in the academy, a couple washed out of the academy because of various reasons. So, to answer your question, 47 sworn, but not all of them are out taking calls on their own yet.
Okay. And what's like max?
Max right now is 56 is budgeted this, this fiscal.
Is that just uniform, or like?
That is every sworn law enforcement officer from the bottom to the top.
From you down, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's 56 officers?
Has it been pretty consistent as far as the hiring? Because I know that once we pushed through the stuff we did for kind of some of those bonuses for the new people coming on, it seemed to help. Is that still the case?
So, it shot up quick. And the last three, we've done three testings this year, and we haven't had very good turnouts.
What about people leaving? Do you have many officers that are leaving?
We've had, we've had three people resign since we implemented the, the pay increase and the hiring incentives. I guess four, if you want to count the officer who we hired for seven days, and then he resigned to take a job with the Army. So, technically four. But we have a few more in the pipeline, a certified officer. I spoke of one of our police service aides, so that's two more. So, that gets us to 49 here pretty quick.
And you can fill those service aide positions, hopefully your...
We, we have applicants.
Those don't take as, as much of a...
Correct.
Certifications or any of that.
Yeah.
So...
It's, it's still pretty, it's still pretty intensive, just because you're still privy to almost all the same inform, information. We just don't have all of the testing that along, that the law enforcement academy requires.
They don't have the, like, citing power that, that some of you guys may have. They can maybe do like a speeding ticket or something, but...
They can't do that.
They can't do any citing?
They can cite, but certain things like parking violations, they can't detain someone. So, if they saw you committing a traffic violation, they can't turn their lights on, or they should not turn their lights on and pull you over.
That's good to know.
But they assist with traffic. They, they assist with traffic crashes, which is a, which is a huge help, because obviously we get a...
In budget, budget hearings, if, if we have the discussion as far as authorizing money for overtime, are any of the officers up for that or doing that in order to start?
So, not always, right? And, and I'm not going to use the, the short staffing. I, I, I think officers and employees value time off, sometimes more than just working and working. So, you know, if they're running 12-hour shifts, they don't always want to come in on the only two days they have off this week to work overtime. So, the state's doing some things with some grant funding to incentivize that, and actually pay officers double time to come do some of that. And like, ooh, you know, some, sometimes money talks. But we have overtime offered all the time, and people don't sign up for it.
They don't take it. I mean, overtime's what, time and a half, so?
Yes, sir, most of the time.
Yeah. What they would make, what, they run at $27 an hour now, so they'd make...
Yeah, they'd probably average 42 to 45 dollars an hour.
On the overtime?
If they're working for time and a half.
Okay. Okay. I see. It's just to have the discussion to see what we can do.
For sure.
Well, I think we're doing everything right, and I think we're doing everything we can. I don't know how you, how you, how do you get people to apply? I have no idea.
It's a, it's a trend. It's not just cops. It's every...
It's everywhere, I know.
It's everywhere. It's...
And our assistant city manager has some information for us. I can tell.
I always have something to say. So, I, I know that you really haven't heard from us, because after Ferguson died, we've been really active on getting resolutions. And we're still working on stuff in the background that we really haven't brought back. But I did want to bring to your attention that the governor did call a special. You want to know what you can do. The governor did call a special session for July 18th, that they're going to talk about specifically public safety issues. So, I don't know what that's looking like. I haven't had a chance to discuss with chief or Rick, but that's something that y'all need to kind of keep in, in the background, because there are some statutory issues that are causing communities to be unsafe, causing us unsafe for our officers. So, we're going to keep an eye on that, and if I have anything, or we come up with anything, we'll get forward to you.
Yep. And I knew about that. I'm going to keep a close eye on that, because I'm curious to see what she has to say. So, I'm hoping it's, it's how to better protect our streets and not how to take our guns. But that's a whole other story.
That's what it's going to be. It's going to be take our guns. It's not going to be...
Well, let's be positive. Anyway, don't say I'm positive she's going to do that. I don't want to hear it. Okay. Anyway, does any...
I'm probably...
Does anybody else?
I'm sorry.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I was making a motion to adjourn.
Okay. So, well, does anybody else have any questions for item 10?
No.
No. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's the hot seat. I know it is. But you handle it well. He's always so calm, cool, and collected, isn't he? Nothing stresses him out in public. Anyway, all right. So, with that, nobody has anything else? I believe there was a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Riordan. Do I have a second? there was a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And we're adjourned. Thank you.